Good evening and welcome to the Millbrae City Council Meeting of November 14th, 2017. Can we have a roll call, please?
All members of the council are present.
Will you please stand and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, first on our agenda, we have a presentation by Leslie Wong, the President of San Francisco State University.
Mr. Mayor, council members, it's truly an honor to be here. The university has been striving to rebuild itself past the recession and to also extend our hand of friendship and cooperation with city governments, both north, south, east, and across the Pacific with future partners. I thought I'd give you a really quick rundown of our relationship to Millbrae and students and then give you an idea of what's happening at San Francisco State. I've learned in my short six years that oftentimes people drive by the campus and don't really know that it is a campus and then understand how large we are. We currently have 106 students from Millbrae attending San Francisco State. And we're really quite proud of the participation of students from Mills High School coming to campus, so we're looking to build that relationship as well. To give you an idea, currently, San Francisco State enrolls approximately 30,000 students per year. We're a very desirable location. Perhaps the best metric is that for each of the last five years, we average about 53,000 applications for 7,000 seats. And so it really is the city environment, the Bay Area environment, and certainly the diversity of the campus, which we're really quite proud of. Very quickly, we offer bachelor's degree in 77 academic areas and we have 48 additional areas of concentration. We have master's degrees in 63 academic areas with an additional 41 areas of concentration. We do offer a doctorate degree, the EDD, in educational leadership. And we offer a partnered PhD in education with a concentration in special ed with UC Berkeley. We also have a clinical doctorate program in physical therapy jointly with UC San Francisco. So we have very important and very valuable partnerships to train the future workforce of the area. 16 credential programs, 42 certificate programs. And to give you an idea of our popular programs, right now, business administration is our most popular undergraduate majors. And about a fifth of our 30,000 students are business majors. So our top 10 undergraduate majors are number one, business administration, followed by, in order, engineering, computer science, biology, cinema, English, communication studies, psychology, broadcast and electronic communication arts, and liberal studies. Everyone is always sort of infatuated with Hollywood and movie making, et cetera. We're really quite proud of both our cinema program and our broadcast and electronic communication arts. We are ranked nationally just a few spots behind USC's Film School at approximately about a tenth of their cost for students to attend. But we have received over the last decade, over 112 nominations for Oscars, Emmys, a number of theater arts awards, et cetera. And if you've seen the movie Inside Out, the animated feature, the producer, creator of that was in fact a San Francisco State alum. So we do supply a lot of opportunities for our students in the entertainment industry, from the digital arts in the Bay Area through Hollywood as well as New York. I also wanted to share with you that we also are experiencing the same demands as many of the areas of the Bay Area in terms of housing. And I thought I'd share with you a little bit of what we're doing. If you've been to San Francisco State, Holloway is the perpendicular intersection to 19th Avenue, just off the highway. And that Holloway, we are now starting to revitalize it into a mixed-use development. Housing is our number one challenge. The first renovation of the first block will be a mixed-use development that we will demolish this coming spring. It currently houses approximately 80 students on that block. And we will go up 10 stories and house just a little over 500 students in the same space. Students are already asking us about reserving spaces in that room, in that new building, et cetera. What makes us exciting is it will be mixed-use, so on the street level will be merchants, stores, et cetera, that are complementary to student and employee needs, drugstore, grocery stores, those kinds of things. And it really will become a campus mainstream. If you go down Holloway, our next project that we're also going to clear ground in about a year is our first new academic building in over 25 years. And it's a creative arts building. It'll be a very super high-tech, four-story building that will house cinema, broadcast electronics, our radio program, a lot of our digital art programs, et cetera. So broadcast electronic, we'll have two full-high TV studios, TV newsrooms, radio stations, post-production. Our back-up, the broadcast electronics program, we like to tell people that it produces professionals with great hiring records, both in front of the camera, behind the camera, and six months away from the camera in terms of post-production. Most of the major TV networks, including AT&amp;T Park, employ our students, graduates, behind the camera. And so they really are a major force in the entertainment industry. If you've been on Lake Merced Boulevard at the end of Holloway, you'll probably see our brand-new Mashouf Wellness Center. There are only three platinum-certified recreation centers in America, and so we're number three, we're really proud. We just opened it up this August, and we believe that it will be cornerstone to housing developments that will go down Holloway and then complement Winston Avenue on the north side of campus. We opened that Mashouf Center on the 23rd, and really a major step forward for us in terms of student health, recreation. We have a recreation and parks tourism program. We also have kinesiology, fitness programs, et cetera. I'm really pleased that there actually is ballet in the building, et cetera. I'm a little concerned that the students wanted and received a huge hot tub in between the two major pools. And as the president, I'm always worried about usually a massage room, which we have installed, a dance studio, as well as the hot tub that seats approximately 20 people at one time. It is not an all-night facility. So again, a little bit of humor to help you out. 118,700 square feet. I wanted to share that with you because on north of campus is Winston Avenue between the mall and us. And there's a strip of property there going down Winston that belongs to the university. In about two years, we will probably clear that, I won't say probably, we will clear that land. And we are intending to construct about 1,000 to 1,050 apartments for employees, for students, and we hope to keep them affordable and below-market prices. To give you an idea, we typically hire about 40 tenure-track faculty a year, coming from across the country, the University of Michigan, the Idahos, the University of Maryland, they come to us with, you know, big careers in front of them. In our, this past year of our 40, approximately 40 hires, the top third, interestingly enough, our number-one picks, actually accepted the offer, showed up, couldn't find housing, and reneged on the offer and returned back to their home states. And it really was kind of a wake-up call for us about the importance of housing. We are also preparing food prep and wellness programs for students. We're finding out that a good proportion of our students are underfed and typically have no place to sleep. And so we are trying to develop a food awareness, food access program that we will be able to feed students appropriately. We are a little bit of landlocked, and so developing housing and developing food services for, if you added our 8,000 employees, at any time during the day, Monday through Friday, there are about 38,000 people working, studying, living, conducting research on the campus. So, and the important thing for us tonight is to share with you the scale and scope of what we're doing, but also how vital we think a relationship with you is in promoting our commitment to social justice, our commitment to contributing to community development in all of the neighboring cities and local governments that surround us. And so it really has been fun visiting, for example, tonight with Millbrae City Council, South San Francisco, Pacifica, a number of the areas, and also across the bridge into Marin and Tiburon. And we're really stressing the need for our academic departments to build relationships to create opportunities for students. So if you don't have an internship program, I will also tell you, we have probably one of the best civic public engagement programs in the area, and the students are looking for real-life experiences. And they really want them early. I've been surprised in the past couple of years, typically internships are junior and senior-level experiences. Students want them now at the end of their freshman, early sophomore year. And so that means that we need to work with you to develop public policy internships, finance internships, accounting, whatever part of city government where you think young people could learn and participate in the operations of Millbrae City Government, please give us a call. I've left my business card with a couple of staff as well. The other piece, I think, I wanted to share with Millbrae too, is that we have more than one campus. And we have a downtown center on Market Street where a lot of our business graduate programs reside. We have a number of social science research stations down on Market Street. We also have the only research station on the inner bay in Tiburon, at the Romberg-Tiburon Center. And it's that confluence of fresh and salt water, and the scientists there do about $12 to $15 million of research there, looking at the environment that surrounds that sort of confluence of fresh and salt water from soil to animals to sea life, et cetera. We are looking to build an extension site in the Bayview Hunters Point. It's one of the last communities in San Francisco that does not have a higher ed center. And we would certainly welcome a discussion with you as we look to the potential of San Francisco State University opening up a center in, south of the city. You are in the heart of our service district, from Millbrae North all the way to Tiburon. And so we're really interested in how we can work with you to expand, not only expand, but reach out in services. And again, our interest is providing whatever opportunities we could offer our students to work with city governments to be involved. We're very high on the issue of having students learn how to serve their communities. So a big part of our definition of social justice is returning back to their home communities and being engaged, right? That they're helping their families, they're helping their neighborhoods, they're helping their communities. And I think working with you, alongside you, in support of you, would be a fascinating way to do that. So, excuse me, I think that would be an excellent opportunity in terms of So, excuse me, I think that would be an excellent opportunity in terms of a partnership between the Millbrae City Government and San Francisco State University. So again, if you have questions, but we'd love to come back. If there are issues that you would like to inform us or at least seek our assistance, we certainly have issues where we could certainly seek your assistance as well. So I want to thank you for this opportunity.
Thank you for that presentation. Councilman Oliva?
Yeah, I was just curious on particularly the size that you look to do some sort of partnership with of a building that you'd be looking for.
I'm sorry.
The size of a building that you'd be looking for to do a partnership.
You know, what we typically do is we would like to find out the program and start the program design first, and then answer the question of space and that kind of thing.
So what kind of program do you see fit here in Millbrae?
Well, I have to tell you, we have one of the largest finance and accounting programs in the Bay Area. You know, how city government is financed and budget developments and those kinds of things, I think would be interesting for students. We have a very successful public policy program, master's degree in public policy as well. And they do everything from bike trails, sustainability, to high-end housing issues. So it really would depend on getting together and determining what, you know, your needs are and where our program needs are, and bringing those together.
Thank you.
Yes, Councilman Schneider.
I'm glad you mentioned the Tiburon location. I took classes there. In fact, I took a number of fieldwork classes in biology when I was an undergrad, so loved them, they were great. The campus up in Tahoe, or above Tahoe, you didn't talk about. I think it's cooperative with Berkeley? Maybe it doesn't exist anymore, but they were great classes.
We still have that property, and we use it during the summer up in the Sierra Field Camp.
Yep.
With our biology program. In fact, our poetry program has a number of seminars up that way throughout the summer, as well as youth camps in the Sierra Nevadas.
Well, I thank you for that. I used to teach at both San Jose State Cooperative Extension and then UC Continuing Education. When you're talking about partnerships with us, are you thinking about classroom community, that type of thing, or internships?
Both. Right now, students, we're looking for internship sites primarily, but a classroom situation we would be open to.
Okay. And then finally, I'm a former board member of Millbrae Community Television, and we have always had interns from San Francisco State, and we couldn't, we, MCTV, couldn't put on the program they put on for Labor Day for our Art and Wine Festival without your students. And a lot of them are graduates, working in the field, some coming back, and they have been fabulous every year, so thank you for that.
Oh, you're welcome. We're proud of them.
Vice Mayor Patten?
Dr. Wong, thank you so much for being here. I heard you and your representatives here speak at the Daly City City Council, and I think it is so extremely important to keep our communities up-to-date on what San Francisco State is doing as a big part of our community, and we so greatly appreciate the addition to housing because the stories that we're hearing about students living in their cars and just the burden throughout with all the tech communities and everybody coming in. So I really compliment you, and I work, you have just such an illustrious alumni that have given back to the community. It is really reflective of what happens at San Francisco State. I hope that we can work with you on some sort of internships here. So if you don't know, Millbrae is the largest intermodal center west of the Mississippi, meaning that Caltrain stops here, Bart stops here. By law, we are a high-speed rail stop, and we have a connection with SFO. So we are in the process, I haven't seen projects yet, but some of the projects that are coming to Millbrae will have bicycle access and all kinds of transportation aspects. So internships or partnerships may be very interesting to hear what some of your students might have to add to some of that. So we look forward to working with you, and we do hope to, reaching out, there are a lot of business people out there. San Mateo County has a huge industrial aspect to it. So I know internships for your students with some of the businesses that go on here would be very, very important.
That would be exciting.
Yeah, definitely, because the educational aspect of preparing people for the workforce is so key. And councilmember, the mayor, Holliver here, we have three community colleges, and his father's on one of the boards there, that we enjoy working with each and every academic aspect here. I will mention to you, though, San Mateo County has some spectacular high school facilities that we, as taxpayers, have invested in, which I believe are not used to the fullest extent possible. So there are facilities, theaters, auditoriums, that you should all look into with our high school district that could be utilized even more so, that I think would be very beneficial to the community as a whole and to your student body. So I encourage you, but I am so excited that you all came here today to brief us on what's happening at San Francisco State. Thank you so much for being here, and we look forward to a growing relationship.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, thank you. Uh-oh. Councilman Lee?
We're very honored to have you here. It's quite an honor for you and your staff to take the time from evening to spend with us, to give us an update on what's going on at the university. Many members of my family and friends have attended the university and became very successful in their career, so I'm very thankful for the university. I just got back from China and as part of a trade mission with many of their elected officials. And one of the things that really stood out for me, that China is trying to grow their intellectual and technologies, they can build, they can build a, you know, a million square acres of wetlands over, you know, six months, when, of course, they don't have CQ, but... The point is, is that they can do fabulous things, but what they lack is the university and community coordinations that we have. Things that happened like at Stanford where, you know, HP was born, where Google was born, they don't have that sort of synergy. And I know our universities really work at it. And so what my, my thing I'd like to ask later on, you don't have, I don't want to put you on the spot today, but my son, who's going to be going to college in two years, you know, I think it would help the parents and the kids if they had some idea what's the future going to look like, and how the universities can help them get there. They're telling us now, you know, when I went to school, it's like, what university did you want to go to? And then you declared a major. Today, it's like, what do you want to do in your life, and what school's going to be the best fit for you? So in that way, as a parent, it would help me and my child to know, you know, where is the future going to be, and how can this university fit in that future? Thank you.
Good point. Good point.
We are in the process of working with our public on a new recreation center. We had a bit of an accident. So we would be eager to check out your new recreational facilities as part of our review moving forward. So we will likely be giving you a call to see what you all came up with, and understanding that hot tubs relieve stress or something like that. But we weren't going for, our public hasn't asked for that yet, but we would be very interested in seeing your platinum facility.
I've had more offers of people driving by, stopping, calling me, going, how do I get a membership? And I always tell them, well, the first key is you have to enroll in school.
And could you give us a little background on the funding for your housing, how this came about? I thought it was interesting.
It's a great question. The Holloway Project Phase One is one of the few public-private partnerships, and so there's no state funds really going into that building. It was a relationship we built with contractors, you know, investors, et cetera. And so that is a public-private piece. The Mashouf Center also did not involve public funds. The students in 2010 decided to tax themselves, and that produced about 85% Robert, about 85% of the total cost, and then gifts to the university, particularly from one donor, Manny Mashouf, covered the rest. And so that was, you know, a non-public fund project. The Winston Project will also be a public-private partnership with the 1,000 apartments. And so we've been trying to be as creative as we can because public funding really is flat to declining. And so as we try to build, rebuild the campus, a lot of it, particularly our academic buildings, will be the result of public-private. Councilman Lee mentions Asia. We actually are developing plans to build a new science building that will be one of the first public-private science buildings in Northern California. Interestingly enough, I've had calls from two Asian governments that said, if you'll let us do research, we'll build one of the floors, cover the cost for that. There are no more laboratories in San Francisco and in the South Bay region. So Oyster Point is booming because it's one of the last areas of having laboratory space available. So I was quite surprised when these government reps called me and said, well, how big's your building? And we were thinking 10 floors, et cetera, to hold our sciences. And they said, well, what's wrong with 12, you know? And then they said, and then my response to them was, my condition is, we'll take your money, but every lab assistant and student employee will be students from the university working in your laboratories, which they were very excited about. So you have to be creative nowadays, that the money is scarce, and we could certainly put our heads together and we could share how we've done that, financed our building.
Thank you so much.
Okay.
Well, thank you for that presentation. We look forward to building a strong relationship with you and your university.
We'll do more together. Thank you.
Well, thank you. Okay. Well, next, we have recognition of the Millbrae CERT for their participation in Urban Shield 2017 Green Command. And we have with us Bill Riley, who is the district coordinator from the San Mateo County Sheriff's Office.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. I'm quite honored to be here tonight to recognize our fabulous CERT team. I think we, as I mentioned before, have the best CERT team in the county. But beyond that, we have some, a number of them that stepped forward recently to participate in Urban Shield 2017. On Saturday, September 9th, Millbrae CERTs participated in Urban Shield Green Command. This included four time-based, state-of-the-art training exercises, each lasting about two hours, that were proctored. The scenarios are based on simulated responses to natural disasters and other emergencies requiring activation. The exercise tested the CERT's knowledge and their training, including basic FEMA CERT training, incident command system, light search and rescue, documenting damage, caring for the sick and injured, crowd control and lost individuals, and assisting individuals with special needs. These are all things that we will face in a disaster, and they are building their skills, you know, to improve that. With that, we were recognized by Urban Shield, and I think is a very nice recognition for our team. With that, I'd like to call Dino DiRinari up here to introduce the members of our team that participated.
Millbrae Man of the Year. Millbrae Man of the Year. Woo!
Millbrae Man of the Year, Dino DiRinari.
Thank you, Bill. Thank you, and thank you, council folks and staff. This time, I would like to ask our team to come up, those that are here tonight, start off with Tom Broker and Viliami Dawi, Chris Gardini, Maureen McDermott, Robert Miller, Robert Morris. And I also want to mention those that were unable this evening to be here due to family and work commitments, Ellen Egan, John Fern, Natasha Shaw, and husband Kevin Shaw, and David Soto. So this was the great team. We were over in Pleasanton at the fairgrounds in sweltering heat that weekend, was up in the 90s, and we were there for a good almost 15 hours. So it was, it was a long day, and that would be a typical day if there were an emergency or a disaster. So thank you very much.
Thank you, guys. Do you guys want to join them for a photo? No? Okay. Nice work. They do need a few women, Marshall, you're right. Thank you.
All right, Dino? Mr. Man of the Year? Dino? Can you make an announcement about the upcoming CERT classes?
CERT classes will begin February 18th, and they will be held at the Chakuti Room. It's on a Thursday evening, and we don't have any hands out this evening, but they are in the library, and they are available online also at our website. Thank you. Thank you.
I might add, in a few weeks, Public Safety Day will be coming up in a few weeks, and we'll have CERT representatives there that day, so people can come and sign up for our CERT classes at that point, and we certainly encourage them to do that. November 28th, from 4 to 6, from 4 to 6, November 28th, prior to the council meeting. Thank you.
Perfect. Thank you.
Vice Mayor Patten?
Marge, remind me, it's January. I'm sorry, we start in January, not February.
Okay, so for those who are tuning in late, can you explain what CERT is and that it's an opportunity for everyone?
Community Emergency Response Teams are a training program to train citizens, volunteers, to help take care of yourself, basically, and your neighbors in an emergency, in a large event, an earthquake, large fires, whatever. Sometimes our first responders are overwhelmed, and this was very apparent in the recent fire that we saw in Napa and Sonoma. And with that, we need people to be able to take care of themselves for a period of time before we can garner the resources in to take care of the, and mitigate the emergencies that exist. With that, we train CERTs to do many things, along with that is search and rescue, some fire suppression, emergency medical aid, and things along those lines that help you sustain, you know, a safe environment prior to all the emergency responders being able to come together and provide services as necessary. So we look forward to that, and please, we encourage everyone to participate at whatever level you can.
Nice work.
Thank you very much for that announcement, and congratulations for the award. Okay. Okay, next on the agenda, we have the Agenda Overview and Staff Briefing from our City Manager, Marsh Rains.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have three quick items this evening, and then I'll do your Agenda Overview. First, as of last, well, as of November 6th, City Hall parking lot is closed. If you've been to City Hall, you do notice. This is in preparation for the modular building that will serve as our temporary community center while the permanent facility is being constructed. As of, it will take us approximately six weeks to get this facility up and open, at which point there will be more parking spaces available. We've done our best throughout the immediate vicinity of City Hall to free up some spaces. We're finding as of today, there are parking spaces available throughout the day, so please do be cooperative and work with us as best as you can to make this work in the transition. As to the community center, the final workshop in series of three was conducted on October 24th. The city council will consider this item on the 28th of November, which is our next meeting in two weeks. The report from Group Four Consultant, our architectural consultant, will provide an implementation plan with project budgets and funding strategies. We're very excited about this stage in the process. As we heard earlier, and I may ask the chief to, thank you for joining us, chief, to refer to, City Services Day is planned for November 28th from 4 to 6. This will be a day where fire, police, and public service staff are available to the public to talk about home protection, public safety, and more issues. The event's a great opportunity to learn more about the city and county staff. The event's a great opportunity to learn more about the city and county staff working together to keep Millbrae safe and keep the community running smoothly, as well as to learn what the community members can do to assist them, assist city staff and assist themselves in getting through any emergency if and when it does occur. It's more when than if. This event will take place in the Chakuti Room, in the library, and the entire Civic Center Plaza. And then finally, I want to let you know that the Public Works has been doing smoke testing. Project's been completed. Residents will receive door hangers with 48 hours' notice in advance of their location with next steps if they require a follow-up inspection. ADA ramps will be working in the vicinity of Juanita and Park Boulevard, and then from November 15th through the 17th, pipe bursting, Public Works will be working in the vicinity of Springfield and Crestview Drive. So, we've got a lot of activity going on as the council has directed in terms of capital Next on the agenda, we have the Reports of Bills and Claims, followed by a closed-session report out from the 14th, your city attorney will give you. You had a special closed-session meeting on November 14th earlier this evening, and the outcome will be discussed by the city attorney. We have no minutes. We have no committee and commission chair meeting updates this evening. We have public communications, and then on consent, we have five items. First is the acceptance of a quarterly investment schedule for the first quarter of fiscal year 1718, followed by council consideration of a resolution that would award construction to Kratus for sewer modernization programs in Medronee Subbasins 1 and 2, and this is part of your sanitary sewer CIP. The amount exceeds $2 million, almost to the point of $3 million. It's $2,985,825. We're asking you to approve also a professional services agreement with Park Engineering in an amount not to exceed $180,000. I may need your city attorney's assistance here, but earlier this evening, one of the council members asked me to explain that you had done preauthorization of on-call contractors. Is that correct? Is that what it's called? And so, when you see this item, Item 6, it's, Park Engineering specifically, was one of those pre-call engineers that was authorized by the council several months ago. Their contract in the amount of $180,000, then was preauthorized through a certain series of steps, and they have complied with that, and we are recommending that they be awarded at this point. We're also asking that you approve a Contract Change Order Contingency Fund of $450,000. The next item is Item 7, where you're going to be asked to consider a resolution that would authorize the city manager to first execute a construction contract with Crex for ADA exterior improvements, to execute a construction contract with Arthuya for interior improvement projects, and then, third, execute a professional services agreement with Bulechi in an aggregate amount of $20,000 to perform construction inspection and project engineering services for the projects above, as well as for execute a contract that would allow change orders and regulated agreements for contingency funds of $25,000 for the exterior project and $5,000 for the interior project. Essentially, the short version would be all the ADA requirements that the city has asked us to comply with on city facilities are incorporated in Item Number 7. Number 8 would be considering an ordinance. This would be your second reading, having to do with limiting recreational medical and commercial cannabis use and other activities pending further evaluation and completion of studies and impacts associated with such activities. And because a number of our audience participants this evening seem to be turning in slips for this, I've asked our city attorney to be clear what this second reading proposal would do this evening. So, Madam City Attorney, if you could take a minute and explain in plain English what is the proposal this evening?
Yes. So, the ordinance before the council this evening for its second reading is for the purpose of not just limiting recreation, medical, and commercial cannabis use and related activities in the city of Millbrae, but to prohibit them. The city council, in its wisdom at this point in time, feels that it needs more opportunity to study whether and to what extent it will allow cannabis sale and cultivation as a business in the city of Millbrae, and for that reason, they are taking action tonight to prohibit those activities. I see the no signs. That is exactly what the council is doing tonight. So, I just wanted to be clear, you know, if you feel the need to get up and tell the council to do what they're about to do, that's fine, but, you know, there are a lot of you here that I think are in agreement with what the council is doing, and I wanted to make clear that I don't think there's the need to get up and advocate it's going to happen. It is before the council had had a unanimous first reading and introduction, and I am assuming that the same will happen with the second reading and the enactment.
Thank you. Thank you. So, to continue with introducing the agenda, that would be Item 8. Thank you, Madam City Attorney. Item 9 is to consider authorizing city manager to execute a contract with Lou Edwards Group for an opinion research and revenue ballot measure preparation, as well as communication services for potential bond measure that would finance our new community center. The amount of this contract is proposed to not exceed $50,000 for your consideration this evening. We have no, following that, would close consent calendar. We have no public hearing items. We have no existing business, no new business. That would bring us to council comments, followed by a closed session where you will evaluate your city manager, and then we recommend adjourning the city council to your next meeting. I'll take questions.
Do we not have a legal report?
You do. As soon as you accept my agenda introduction, she'll report out on your closed session from the 14th. You're correct.
A number of neighborhoods have had the smoke testing for the potential leaks in the sewer system. If, you said that they'll be getting letters if they need to do additional work. If a home is tested as not needing work, will they not hear anything at all, or will they also get a letter saying, "You're okay"?
So, the city engineer, I'm sorry, the Public Works Director, recent change there, is stepped out so that we would have adequate room for everybody to sit down, but he's going to enter the, yeah, he's going to enter the room and come up and help me with this. He'll be placing door hangers on the doors of those residents that need additional work, not letters. Let's be clear. Keelim.
Yes, correct. If we need to retest your property, you get a door hanger notice. If your property is fine, you will not receive any further communication from us.
Okay. And is that on the website? I've had a number of people from a number of streets ask me that.
No, it is not on the website. We do publish the schedule on a weekly basis. The reason why we are not publishing them on the website because of the delay, the unexpected delay at times, so we don't want to give you false alarm.
Okay. I'm just thinking that the people who everything is okay, maybe, maybe it's not this week, but the PR firm that we have, maybe they can send something out and say, "Hey, if you don't hear anything, everything is great."
Okay, sure. We'll work with the city manager and come out with a report back to the council on the smoke testing.
Okay. And we do have a report out from the special closed session, and our city attorney Joan Casman is here to give that report.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, the city council met tonight in a special meeting closed session right before this regular meeting to discuss for the second time employment-related claims that have been lodged by Ray Chan with the city of Millbrae. There was a mediation on this very matter that was conducted with authorization from the city council from our earlier closed session to consider a reasonable settlement. I presented the council tonight with the results of the mediation in which a settlement agreement was reached to resolve these employment-related claims in the amount of $130,000. The council took action in closed session. It was unanimous vote to ratify this settlement agreement. That completes my report. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Next on our agenda is the public communication. This is the opportunity for members of the public to speak on any item that is not on this evening's agenda, so not the marijuana ordinance that will come later. Speakers have up to three minutes, and you may speak when the green light's on. The yellow light means you have 30 seconds left, and the red light means your time has expired. So, the first speaker tonight is Wyn Gersich.
I came here tonight to talk about the poisons in our drinking water, but most importantly, since you had San Francisco State here, Hayward is opening up a lot of pot dispensaries, so don't send your kid to Cal State East Bay, because if you want them to be stoned, just go to that college across the bay in Hayward. And that's why you need to find out how many are going to be around San Francisco State if they opened up dispensaries there, too. Anyway, what I came here to talk about is, if you all read Chloramine Causes Collateral Health Damage by Dr. Wyn Parker. Wyn Parker has a radio show, and he was talking about how chloramine breaks sperm head and mutates our genes, and he talks about how what they put in our drinking water is sterilizing us. So, it's not only so corrosive, it's leaching lead, and you can see that now the schools all around the Bay Area have lead leaching, but that's also in your homes, too, because this is poison. So, instead of using alternative technology like Willie Brown did when he made this bottled water for San Francisco PUC and for the city councils in San Francisco, this water has alternative technology to take poisons out. I took my father to the movies today, and there was a man in Africa that invented a thing to take all the stuff out of the water, all the toxins. He said, "Most people are in the hospital because all the poisons in our drinking water." And this is globally. So, if they can use alternative technology, and they're trying to do that in Africa, why in Millbrae, that has the most expensive water on the peninsula, why aren't you trying to get alternative technology, too, instead of putting ammonia and bleach, which you know which causes cancer? But most of all, Jackie Spears wrote a bill in 1995 when old Bush Senior got us in the New World Order. This is on YouTube. It says, "2017 Banded Documentary: The Truth About Water Exposed." This will show you what fluorosalonic acid is. If you touch it, it will kill you, and if you breathe it, it'll cause all kinds of problems and cancer. And what's really amazing is that this documentary, if people watch it, you want to have a town hall meeting, and you'd like to put Jackie Spears in jail, in my opinion, because this thing will show you the poison that she put in your drinking water, and this can be stopped immediately. You can demand it, the same way you're trying to stop these weed things in your city, you can stop fluoridation in your drinking water. And this is another thing, too. Dr. Dean Burke, he did the federal studies before Jackie Spears wrote that bill for 40 years, testing fluoridated cities. They know it increases cancer death rates exponentially. If you watch this, Dr. Dean Burke, fluoride is poison, he will show you what's in that water. He will tell you how much cancer it causes, and it doubles breast cancer death rates. So, chloramine causes breast cancer, and fluoridation makes sure that, you know, more women will have breast cancer. We can get this stopped. Another thing, too, and this is really important, this is about fluoride also, believe it or not, if you look up YouTube, it says, "The CIA's Secret Experiments Medical Documentary." They were talking about how our government, after World War II, brought these people here, and the thing is, is Prozac has fluoride in it, and these are the people that become shooters in your schools.
The next speaker is Chris DeRosa.
I'm mayor, vice mayor, and city council. As you're aware, I've been to several council meetings the last, last several times, and a special meeting in September 2017, where all five of you guys, council members, told the city manager to make flooding in my neighborhood a high priority. Council directed that the city of Millbrae to continue working with my neighborhood to coordinate and continue meetings and follow-up meetings with us and all government agencies such as SFL and Caltrain, and to ascertain maps of land ownership. I was also approached by a few of you guys after that special meeting, and thanked for bringing this up and advised that if the meetings did not continue, please advise you guys. Since that day, I've emailed the DPW director, Keelim, to try and coordinate any meetings to follow-up or, to follow-up meetings, to no avail. I am still looking for the city of Millbrae with regards to flooding issues, to coordinate current things or current plan, a midterm plan, a long-term plan with capital improvements that includes the FEMA CRS program and grants, or, and if funding is needed, grants that FEMA offers. On October 26th this year, I sent you all an email referencing FEMA CRS, that Pacifica did in 2013, and it took one year's time for the Pacifica Tribune. In addition, city of San Mateo was looking into an initiative for new protection from floods from the, that was written in the San Mateo County, San Mateo Daily Journal, which I also sent you guys all, which I believe you guys received. I hope, just, just being here today, I just wanted to update you guys on what was going on, to keep the city of Millbrae and the city council and honest of their word, and hope that you guys see that my meetings with the, with the, well, my neighborhood and the meetings with the DPW are continued, if that can be. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. DeRosa. The next speaker is Clarice Veloso.
My name is Clarice Veloso, and I'm here to represent Hip Housing. A lot of you probably recognize my face. I'm here almost every year. On behalf of Hip Housing, I would like to thank the Honorable Mayor and the members of the city of Millbrae for your continued support of our organization. Research has been done by the county of San Mateo that explains, due to housing unaffordability, 63% of workers in San Mateo County live elsewhere. And what is the result of that? Unbearable traffic congestion and long commutes for all of us. Hip Housing's creative housing programs create housing solutions for low-income families and seniors and workers in the community, so we can all live close to where we work. This year alone, we have served 16 Millbrae residents. We've matched four Millbrae residents in our home sharing program, and we continue to search for housing for 41 Millbrae residents, people who work, live, or go to school in Millbrae. So, as a token of our appreciation and a reminder of our partnership throughout the year, I'd like to present the council with Hip Housing's new 2018 calendar. This is the 17th calendar that Hip Housing has created. It's filled with information about Hip Housing's programs and children's artwork from students throughout San Mateo County, including Millbrae. The children drew a picture of a house and explained what home means to me. So, we ask that you help us please spread the word about our home sharing program and about the free services that Hip Housing provides. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Veloso.
Before you go, could you tell people how they contact Hip Housing?
Yes. So, you can go to our website, www hiphousing.org. We have offices all around San Mateo County. Our main office is in downtown San Mateo on Claremont Street, so you can stop by and make an appointment. We have three housing programs. We have affordable housing properties all around the county. The waiting lists are long, but it's good to get on the waiting list as soon as possible if you think you'll be needing affordable housing in the future, excuse me, in the future. And our home sharing program is always open. There is no waiting list, and we try to match you with a home provider immediately.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you. The next speaker is Ray Scarabocchio.
Good evening, mayor, vice mayor, council members. On a lighter note, I got to attend, November 1st was the Mills vs. Cap luncheon that was held at the Bass Cultural Center, and council member Schneider and Olivia was there. And for those of you that have never attended, it's the senior cheerleaders, the senior football players, and the senior band members. We filled the place up. It was over, it was, as you guys were there, it was full. The band plays, the cheerleaders each do a cheer, the football players get up, and they have one speaker from each senior class, speaks about what it was for them to go to Mills, to go to Cap, the rivalry and all of that. Then they got up there, and we made a little bet between, it's great, the principals get up, and they talk a little trash to each other, and then they make a bet, and then the council members get up, and they make a bet, and then the coaches get up and say a little something, and it's just a great, great day that is put on by, yes, the Rotary, and it is just so dynamic. And for any of you that either have a senior next year or know someone there at either of the schools, it is by far, it's great to see these young men and young ladies getting ready to go out and what it has meant to them, so. And I thank you guys for attending. Unfortunately, we were on the short end of it this year. We've got to pay our debt, but even though, it was a great experience. So, you know, we really had a lot of fun, so I want to thank you guys for coming out.
Debt paid, by the way, mayor. Debt paid.
Debt paid. There you go.
Unfortunately, the game wasn't quite as exciting as the luncheon, but...
It was not. It was not.
All right. Councilman Schneider? All right, Councilman Schneider?
It's a very fun event. I think this is my second or third year. It's also a fundraiser for both schools. I'm not sure how it works, but many of our local merchants participate. So from Lillies to Osole Mio, I would forget everybody, but I'm sure it's on a website. Thank you to all of the local merchants who help with that.
And we were very fortunate to have Tom Rathman, who played for the 49ers and Super Bowl teams, come out and speak about what it meant for him. He came from a small town in Nebraska, and, you know, it basically made everyone think that if you dream big enough, anything can happen. So again, my hat's off to you guys for attending. Yes.
Thank you, coach. My son plays in the band, by the way.
Yeah, it was, it was, it was good. They sounded great. So next year might be our year.
And I paid my debts, too. So I'd just also like to mention that if anybody wants to participate in this event, they can go, or they can actually donate a meal to one of the students. So there's several ways you can support the program.
Great community thing.
And coach, how are the new lights looking?
Well, I coached at San Mateo, unfortunately, sorry, but it is, they're killer. And if you are a resident who are near any of the high schools, either at CAP or at Mills, you can see that these LED lights are so far superior to what used to be there, and the fear of light going onto the street and invading other people's houses really doesn't exist anymore. And the sound system is great, too. It just keeps it right there. So again, great improvements. You hit it best when you said that we have some underutilized, our high schools really are gems, and if you haven't seen them, do yourself a favor. So, great. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Okay, next on the agenda is the consent calendar. We have five items tonight, items five, six, seven, eight, and nine. I have a few speaker slips here for item number eight, so I think we should pull that. And I also would like to request to pull item nine, just for a brief presentation from the consultants who are here this evening to explain the project going forward. So if we can have, it looks like a motion and a second. This is for items five, six, and seven. A motion from Councilman Lee and a second from Vice Mayor Pappen.
Consent calendar items five, six, and seven are unanimously approved.
Okay, next is item number eight. This is the ordinance on prohibiting commercial cannabis use. And I don't know, would you like to give a brief staff report, Tony? I think we've been, gone through this enough, but...
We have. Mr. Mayor, council, good evening. Staff is here to provide any guidance that's necessary, as well as the city attorney's office.
Why don't we take a vote, and then maybe the comments might get answered?
I think we need, we need to have the comments before voting, just in terms of procedure. Councilman Lee?
Could staff just summarize again, just summarize again for our listening audience who haven't, just tuning in, as well as those new people who are attending? And are in favor of letting whoever wants to speak to speak about this issue? They put this speaker slip knowing that the issue is, might the outcome of the issue is?
All right. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council. Thank you. I'd like to echo what the city attorney mentioned earlier this evening, that this item had been heard by the council at the October 24th meeting. It was the introduction of an ordinance. Essentially, it was, it's itemized as limiting recreational medical and commercial cannabis use and items such as sale and cultivation. Essentially, that is a ban to prohibit those uses. The city council did unanimously vote to move this item for a second reading tonight upon adopting that ordinance. So there's, there was no amendments at that evening, no changes to the drafted ordinance, and it is, remains the same before you this evening from that meeting.
All right, thank you, Ms. Ward. Yes, Ms. Casman?
Maybe one more clarification for the council, although I think you know this and the audience. So if the city does not take this action tonight, what happens is that the state will regulate the sale and cultivation permits, the issuance of licenses as of the first of the year, January 1, 2018. What the city is doing is resting control of this issue locally. They are taking action to ban so that the state will no longer provide the regulatory scheme that would be applicable in the city. So, so we're putting this ban in place in order to thwart having to abide by the state regulations, which would go into effect January 1st. And that would, which would allow both cultivation and sale of cannabis in the city of Millbrae. So just to be very clear, we're, we're taking local control, and, and our, our way of doing that is to put in effect this regulation, which will prohibit these uses of cannabis in the city of Millbrae.
Councilman Lee?
Questions, but is there an opportunity for, I mean, to me, maybe I misread it, but there is an opportunity to come back and revisit the issue? Is that, yes or no?
Yes, that's correct.
And how long?
With adequate notice and the required public noticing.
At any time? At any time?
At any time.
Is that for any ordinance?
Again, if we don't take this action, the use and cultivation of cannabis will apply in the city of Millbrae as of the first of the year. So what we are doing is taking control, and in doing so, our action tonight to regulate it by way of prohibiting it.
Okay, so the first speaker tonight is Charles Me. Charles Me? If Charles Me is here, you can come up. Next will be Catherine Zhang.
Good evening, mayor. Good evening, everyone. My name is Catherine Zhang, and I'm a resident of Millbrae for 15 years. And tonight, I just want to say no to marijuana, and we want a clean, safety Millbrae. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Zhang. The next speaker is Eddie Singh. Eddie Singh?
Good evening, mayor, council members. My name is Eddie Singh. I've been here over 30 years. I like the small-town feel because I work in the city, and then I come back and relax and enjoy. So I do not want to sacrifice profits over safety. I do not want to sacrifice safety over the sale of marijuana or the use of recreational medical, you know, cannabis. So please put the limit and order ban on the sale in place, and then we want to have a, you know, enjoyable urban life. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Singh. The next speaker is Deng Lu.
Good evening, mayors and councils. My name is Deng Lu. I have been living in Millbrae for three years. I raised two lovely daughters, and this evening, I'm representing my entire family and myself to stand against allowing and legalizing any form of cannabis activity in Millbrae. We moved to Millbrae almost three years ago, and we do love this city very much. But if you ask me, if, am I going to raise my family in a city where marijuana dispensaries are blocks away from my home and schools? My answer is no, never. But if you ask me, am I willing to pay that much of property tax to a city where money is spent on dealing with crimes that come with marijuana activity? My answer is no, never. Let me make my point more clear again. Please, please do not allow any form of cannabis activities in Millbrae, and please do not hurt our beautiful communities. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And the next speaker is Joe Chen.
Good evening, mayor, Hollabaugh. Good evening, mayor Hollabaugh and Vice Mayor Pappen. My name is Joe Chen, living at 260 Loyola Drive in Millbrae for more than 18 years. I'm speaking on behalf of many of our friends and neighbors living in Millbrae to oppose letting marijuana come into Millbrae. Our friends, please raise your hands. Thank you. The scientific literature is clear that marijuana is addictive and that it's used significantly impairs bodily and mental functions. Marijuana use is associated with memory loss, cancer, immune system deficiency, heart disease, and birth defect, among other negative conditions. Even rare discriminant marijuana trafficking remain a source of violence, crime, and social disintegration. We don't want our children to have easy access to marijuana. The negative impact is enormous to our children and our community. We strongly oppose any cultivation and dispensary of marijuana in Millbrae. They amended ordinance, even though prohibit the commercial dispensary and the growth of marijuana, but it still allowed person over 21 years old to grow six plants per person in any indoor family, indoor house. This is a bad beginning, because it is very difficult to control, number one, how many plants that each person grow. When you allow the grow in a personal properties, and they can keep growing and growing, and it will bring a lot of crime to the Millbrae. So I urge the city council to consider ban any cultivations of marijuana in the city of Millbrae altogether. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Sissy Riley.
Hi, my name is Sissy Riley. I live in Millbrae for 23 years. I'm a real supporter. I say poverty is here because my client, my past client, current client, and future client, like the clean city, like the school, because we have good reading school, right? Please say no for this. Our community, our past client, current client, and future, and our neighbors, all gonna vote to all of you in next term. Thank you very much. Right?
Thank you. Now, there was a comment regarding personal cultivation, and maybe Ms. Ward, if you can come up back to the podium. It's my understanding that under Proposition 64, we cannot prohibit personal growth of marijuana up to six plants. Isn't that correct?
That is correct.
So there are certain limitations as to what we can do legally. We can prohibit commercial sales, but not personal cultivation and personal use.
So you might clarify that that is state of California law?
State of California law.
The state of California allows for that particular use.
So, yeah, just for clarification as to why that is in the ordinance. Okay, so we have a motion from...
Can I have a quick question along those lines, though? The state, we, nobody, we can't change the state law, but if someone were to do a private growth of their home, can we require, so we know where they are, can we require them to do a license here in the city of Millbrae?
So if it's over the amount, if it's over six plants, it is prohibited. Your ordinance will prohibit that.
Yeah, but can we also, you know, require them to get some sort of a license?
Oh, it is. Yes.
In the ordinance, there is a provision that would allow the planning department to identify the location of these, of these properties.
So we know where this is happening.
Up to six, okay.
Yes.
Yes.
Correct, yeah.
Can you clarify that again? So if, if in fact you're in the state law, you have to clarify with the city that you're growing marijuana? Whether it's one, two plants?
No, but it's my understanding that we can require a permit. We can't prohibit people from growing up to six.
Right, so if you are doing that, you need to...
Have a permit.
I think our attorney's checking on that. They're all looking at you, John.
I know they are. So, let's see. Yes, that is true. So what, what does the state, the state law does allow the growth of up to six cannabis plants, but our ordinance is asking them to come, it has to be indoors, too. We are prohibiting outdoor cultivation, absolute prohibition. There can be, under state law, indoor cultivation, up to six plants, and they do come to the city's planning department to get a permit.
Councilman Lee, do you have a question?
Yeah, so what is the penalty if they grow more plants and if they're selling plants out of their homes? I know they can't, but what do they do?
So the penalty for violation of this ordinance is the same as the penalty for violation of any ordinance. We would, we could issue an infraction and, pardon me? Yes, I guess it would be a misdemeanor. Yeah, you're right. It would be a misdemeanor. As a misdemeanor, it would have to be a complaint process, and it would go through the court system.
If they sold, is it still a misdemeanor?
Yeah, well, they're prohibited from sales, so...
Your question, I don't think we can hear.
I'm sorry. So if they did sell, I can't remember which council member said that, but if they did sell, then they're breaking the law. And which penalty is that, which, what is the penalty? Is it a misdemeanor or a felony?
Oh, it would be a misdemeanor, I'm sure.
Under state law, not under...
Okay.
Yeah. It would be a misdemeanor, and we'd have to prove knowing an intentional violation, et cetera. It would be a, it would be a criminal court case, and like any violation...
Can we increase the fines to make it, to deter people from doing that?
So the fine system for violations of city code are basically established uniformly across all cities, and there is a bailiff schedule. And I think our own court, our own code has a series of monetary fines, $100 for the first infraction, $250 to $500 for consecutive infractions, yes.
So it's the same as dropping a piece of paper and getting caught for littering?
Well, yes, this is a violation of our municipal code, and in our municipal code, we set forth, yes, yes. It was the same. Now, at some point, I mean, if there was a second or a third violation, we could go for a misdemeanor, and we could utilize the resources of the district attorney's office and seek more strict enforcement. But I imagine for a first violation, we would be hard put to seek very rigorous penalties.
Yeah, we do have a few more speaker slips here.
I understand that. I think we need clarification from the chief here, though, that, I mean, we violate, we have very concerned parents in our audience here. So if someone were to do a private grow, and they were trying to sell to minors, what kind of an offense is that?
That's different.
Well, that would be a criminal offense, and it would be punishable by a misdemeanor. They're still trying to work that out with the district attorney's office for prosecution. Steve Wagstaff, I believe, spoke about that at a previous council meeting a while back, but it is, it is a misdemeanor at this point. So unless they could, unless you could prove, I mean, there are certain parameters that they're still trying to work out.
Contributing to the delinquency, that kind of thing.
Yes, and that's...
That's like giving alcohol to a minor, I mean...
So now you're talking about the penal code. So, you know, I thought our discussions were...
I know.
...our municipal code and violations of our municipal code. If you want to talk about violations of the state penal code, in which you are selling substances to minors, et cetera, that's, that's a whole new story, and it's, that's not really within our jurisdiction. That would be something that the people of the state of California would bring those actions through our district attorney's office.
And I think we're just trying to ensure the public that the penal code will be enforced within Millbrae to the fullest extent.
We do have a few more speaker slips, so...
I just want to just add one more PSA.
Last comment?
Yeah, public service announcement that if you see...
Yeah, public service announcement that if you see different people come into a house that you don't recognize every day, lots of people going and visiting this house, that's probably something you need to pay attention to and report that to the police.
Thank you for that. Okay, next speaker is Vincent Lo. Vincent Lo? Next is Carol Chang.
Hi, good evening, mayor and council member. I want to speak with my concern about marijuana, just like all the parents here. I mean, come to the meeting a few times. I never seen that many people show up at the meeting that tell us how serious this issue is. I'm happy to hear the mayor and council member have a unanimous vote against the marijuana use and the commercial use in Millbrae, in our city. Thank you for, for your support, and I want to, you guys to stand strong on the same modding. It also concern me that this issue can be bought anytime and can be revisited. I'm also happy that our city attorney say that we take action, take proactive action to control within our city and not let this in the hand of state. Thank you very much.
The next speaker is Carol Chang. Carol Chang? Okay. Hu Lan Chen Chang? Hu Lam Chen Chang? Or Tom Chang?
Good evening, council, everyone. My name's Tom.
So can you speak into the microphone, please?
I live in 331 Loyola. I stayed at home over 32 years. We have the discussion about its general aid with my grandson, my family, everyone. My family always is 14, 14 people from the elementary school student to the Mears High. Everyone have grand, I'm grandfather. I, the, the finally, we are everyone full discussion this one. We are opposite story. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And Kenneth Hensu Chang? Kenneth Hensu Chang? Okay, that's all the speaker slips we have. So we have a motion on this item from Vice Mayor Pappen and a second from Councilman Lee. Your votes, please.
Just to be clear for the record, we are dismissing the, the second reading or waiving the second reading and enacting the ordinance, all in one, full sweep.
One motion.
And to be clear, we're enacting the ordinance to prohibit.
As stated...
As stated in the resolution.
All right, your votes, please.
The council has unanimously waived the second reading and adopted an ordinance amending Chapter 5.120 of the Millbrae Municipal Code, limiting recreational medical and commercial cannabis use and other activities pending further evaluation and completion of studies of impacts and associated, of impacts associated with such activities.
Okay, thank you. Actually, could we just take a short break? Five, five-minute break?
All right.
I got him. Thank you.
Welcome back. The next item on our agenda is item number nine. This is a motion to execute a professional service agreement with Lou Edwards Group for opinion research of a revenue ballot measure for the financing of the new Millbury Community Center, not to exceed $50,000. And we have with us our Finance Director, Deanna Hillbrance, as well as...
So, we're here for available for questions unless you request a full staff report. It's your pleasure.
Well, actually, I was hoping that maybe the representatives from Lou Edwards and FM3 could give that presentation.
That'd be wonderful. They're here.
So, I'm happy to introduce Kathryn Lou. She'll be the lead consultant on this project, and she can give you a little bit of insight and answer some questions for you.
Sure.
Good evening, Mayor and Council, and members of the public. My name is Kathryn Lou, and I'm co-founder and the principal consultant of the Lou Edwards Group. It is great to be here as the Mayor and Council consider whether to retain our team for a second partnership. Back in the day, it was our privilege to represent the city on a successfully enacted library bond. So, this would be our second engagement with the city for both of our firms. And in general, I'd like to say that we view our role as building on the exceptional engagement that's already occurred to date from other professionals on your team. We have done significant due diligence already on the planning that has occurred, and understand that several hundred residents have already been engaged in the process. We will be building on those efforts by adding value to truly determine at this time whether voters are interested in paying for the facilities and the facilities described, and if so, to what extent. So, our team is looking forward to jumping in feet first to do this important work with you. And as I understand that the city has is strongly interested in retaining the option of proceeding as early as a June election, we are prepared to put fire for moving forward and have some results back to the city staff before the end of the calendar year. With that, we're I'm happy to take questions. Emily Salgado from the Lou Edwards Group and Miranda Everett from FM3 Research are also here. I would, however, caution the council that any discussion of specific questions in the public arena could bias or taint responses to the survey. It is our objective that we be as impartial and unbiased as possible in the administration of the survey questionnaire. So, with that, we're open to your questions.
Okay, thank you. Councilman Lee?
I was only interested in knowing how it's going to be affected by other competing measures. Are you guys going to be working on asking those questions as well?
Thank you. We will... So, just to say out loud, we view potential other measures on the ballot as being other factors. It is yet to be determined whether they are competing or not. Certainly, one of our responsibilities, whether the council, in its wise judgment, chooses to proceed in June or at another time, is to fully evaluate the impact of the overall environment, including the demographics of the voters that will be participating in a given election, as well as the effect, if any, of other candidate or measure elections on the ballot.
Councilwoman Schneider?
Please, first forgive my ignorance. I haven't been through a process yet. I wasn't here when the library bond went through. So, do you interview council members if we have some concerns that we may not want to put out right now? Or... I don't want to do something to do what you just cautioned us not to do, but I have a couple of questions about... We haven't seen the whole project yet. We haven't made that decision. And someday, there'll be a dollar amount you'll be looking at. But what if there are other revenue sources? Will that be part of your process? That's kind of my question.
Yes, in general, I will say, and I do want the council to feel comfortable in conversing in this format. So, in general, I will say that your city staff has already been exceptionally helpful. In addition to providing us with background information, we do understand that there is a significant discussion that will be occurring on the parameters and potential costs of the project on November 28th, I believe. And we have already built that into the timetable to ensure that our work can move forward expeditiously. In general, we want to be as flexible and open-minded as possible. So, generally speaking, we've already advised the city staff that even though we are working, planning on working diligently to ensure that the option of a June election is preserved, it would be our best advice that we draw a November sample with a June subset. Therefore, that allows you to stretch your precious investment in this project wisely and well. In the hopefully unlikely event that June happens to be more complicated than we anticipate, we would then be able to at least share with you data for a second possible election. It is very important to the team that, again, the city's precious investment in this project be deployed wisely and well. We can test up to two funding mechanisms properly in one survey instrument. I might add that it is part of our best practice to collaborate closely with our client city attorneys on such studies. And to the extent that conceptual ballot questions will be developed, we are looking forward to collaborating closely with her on those elements of the survey.
So, my second question is, this tonight's agenda item has already hit Nextdoor. There's already questions out there. I know I can't answer them. And a lot of the assumptions made in those Nextdoor postings are wrong. And it's always hard when you can't jump in there and correct it. So, just be aware that it's out there, and it can prime the pump the wrong direction.
Thank you.
I haven't broken any rules that way.
Thank you. And for any members of the public who may be listening, let me just reiterate again that the purpose of as your consultants, while we have done due diligence and have an outside perspective on the planning that has already occurred and the unfortunate events of the loss of the community center previously, we come to this project with no preconceived judgments or opinions as to how the city should move forward. It is truly our intent to complete a purely unbiased and objective study, to, in fact, ask the residents and voters what projects and services are important to them, and to fully gauge to what extent, if any, they're willing to pay to pay for these services and programs moving forward. So, with that in mind, it would be appropriate to simply suggest that any responses to the survey will be greatly appreciated and of assistance to the city.
And sorry, just a quick follow-up to that. You would be testing different potential dollar amounts that we would be asking?
Our intent is to provide as much helpful data to the city council as possible. Yes, that is something that we have preliminarily discussed with city staff.
Councilwoman Aliva?
So, based upon our population and our voters in the city, what is there, 12,000 voters in Millbury? How what will be the population of the survey? The number?
Yes, and I would like to call Miranda Everett up to describe the methodology more in general terms. I will say, however, that it is in this type of study, it is standard to draw a sample that is demographically representative of the actual election scenarios to be tested. Miranda?
I had a follow-up on that, too, please.
Sure. So, you're right that the number of registered voters is right around 12,000. We will be drawing a random sample of 300 voters, and we'll be conducting it in two languages.
And will that be those 300, will that be via internet, cellphone, landline?
Phone, cellphone and landline, both very important these days, and online as well.
Okay, so if they don't answer on a landline, do you continue to survey till you get 300 population?
Yes, we we basically we group people into clusters according to demographics to ensure that we're getting the right mix of, you know, males over 50, women under 40, different kind of demographics, and select from each of those and then and ensure that the 300 we get are representative and not just the first 300 to answer.
And what will be the two languages, sorry?
English and Cantonese.
Okay, thank you.
Just a question, is 300 enough, in your opinion? I thought I'd heard before on other campaigns that typically 400 is the sort of the minimum for relatively low margin of error.
So, 300 gives us a margin of error around 6% plus or minus. For the entire state and the entire country, typically, we would do a 600. So, in terms of the size of this community and the size of the likely voters for November or June, as much as actually smaller than 12,000, we feel it's a it's a pretty robust sample and enough to get the information we need about how to move forward.
And we need about 46% in order on any scale of whatever the answer is to make it look like a good study? To go forward or not to go forward, 46% of an answer? No?
Not sure I understand that.
In order for our consulting team to feel confident in advising the city to proceed with a given election, you would need to be above the margin of error of plus or minus, give or take six points, on the last ballot ask in the survey. So, for a 2/3 requirement measure, you would have needed to cross over into the low 70 percentiles for me to feel comfortable advising you to proceed.
Perfect, thank you.
Vice Mayor?
Sorry. We do want to emphasize with every message you send forward, you are will be working closely with Group Four as this proceeds. Is that correct?
Yes, we've already city staff has already helpfully allowed us to have some interaction with your financial advisor, and we will be also collaborating with Group Four. As your lead consultant, the Lou Edwards Group typically provides project management and facilitation to ensure a well-coordinated process moving forward. That also represents a strong multidisciplinary effort. It will be necessary for all professionals to be working together decisively and well in the weeks ahead.
What my primary concern is that whatever message is communicated moving forward is consistent. We do, we want the voters to know what the costs are going to be clearly. A number was printed in the paper today. I'm not sure that that was accurate, but already there's maybe some misconceptions out there. And we do want to make sure that the message, whatever is communicated, is consistent throughout. Credibility, as far as what the voters can expect as to the cost of a building, is very important to us as a council. And we know, we just want to make sure that that message is sent forward in a consistent manner. Can you give us any education on how June voters versus November voters? Do they vary in who turns out or who doesn't? One of those preconceived... I mean, if we're crossing over there, but it tends to be different.
Generally speaking, and while emphasizing that though we have been successful in the past in your community, we, of course, do not second guess or make any presumptions on behalf of your voters. However, as the council itself is undoubtedly aware, in a June election, your 65 and over population is close to 57% of the vote. In November, it's closer to 41.5. So, obviously, the views of your 65 of all your constituents, but in light of the proportionate share of the vote, your 65 and over constituency will be extremely important and certainly something that our team will be quite sensitive to. I might also add, given the robust participation on other agenda items this evening, your November turnout is six points higher with respect to the Asian Pacific Islander community, which may also be a consideration when considering a 2/3s requirement measure. Statistically speaking, Asian Pacific Islanders, Latino voters, and African American voters are statistically more likely to be supportive of these types of measures. So, while K through 14 agencies have the ability to proceed with bonds at the 55% requirement level, the city does not unless some manner of citizenry chooses to attempt to qualify via initiative, given recent changes in the law. But short of that, these sliver of votes can potentially be very meaningful and very important. So, it that's the reason why our team is counseling an open mind and flexibility. Let's determine what it is our voters want us to hear. We will report back on those results so that you can engage in a careful deliberative process.
As a final note, Mr. Mayor, and I would like city staff, whatever message is being communicated, that if, as was mentioned, something inappropriate or inaccurate, excuse me, is on Nextdoor, that we keep our message consistent as to costs of whatever this project may be, because the messaging is very important, whatever the Edwards Group does here. And we do have a PR person that handles Nextdoor. We should be very accurate so that the public stays informed. Please, thank you.
Councilwoman Aliva?
So, I know you said that you've worked here in Millbury before with a successful bond measure. Have you ever done a bond measure for a community center before in another city?
Yes, there was a list of some selected bond clients that we provided to city staff. So, I also want to point out, which may or may not be a consideration in your case. So, yes, we've done a number of education bonds, bonds for various public facilities, public safety, library, civic center.
And you won them all, right?
It has been our privilege to enact 35 billion with a 95% enactment rate.
That's what I wanted to hear. Thank you.
Okay, any final comments or questions? Okay. We have a motion from Councilman Lee and a second for myself. Your votes, please.
Thank you very much. We so look forward to, again, jumping in feet first with city staff and the council subcommittee. Thank you.
Thank you.
The motion is unanimously approved.
All right. Next on the agenda is council comments. So, let's begin with Councilman Lee. I know you have some interesting news to report.
Which interesting news? My trip or?
Yeah.
Oh, okay. So, myself and some members of the San Mateo County China Trade Association, mayor from Pacifica, Michael Neal, council member, former mayor Mike Gionna, is that right?
Gingona.
Gingona, sorry, from Daly City. And then Representative Michael Lappin, who has the Mike Show, from South San Francisco, and a few other business members went to several cities in China to market and tried to expand our economy for the Bay Area, specifically for San Mateo County. And I've gone there like three or four times, and I'm hoping to do a presentation later. But the bottom line is, is we need to expand our markets in America. And Jerry Brown made a visit to meet with the President, Xi Jinping, to do just that, to expand our markets, California markets in China. And important the importance of that is because China is on this this initiative called the Belt Initiative, One Belt Initiative. So, they're trying to expand their markets around the world. And United States needs that to expand our markets, and particularly our intellectual markets here. And it would boost, it would create jobs, high-paying jobs for the Bay Area, and it would produce opportunities which we did not have in the past, including very specialized manufacturing. So, I think that we met with governments from Hong Kong, Zhao, and that's where they had the G20 Summit last year. And we also met with the government of Chengdu. And just to show you the things they could do there, they built a 200,000-square-meter lead building, shopping mall, hall high-end shopping, and they were able to pay for the building within six months. So, that's the power of their market. And it's a market that we should, we shouldn't be sitting by and hoping that things will come our way. We need to make the opportunities for ourselves. And I'm hoping to encourage other cities and other council members from other cities to come up with a plan that we can take, you know, be part of that market. So, that was our that was our intent, and we were successful in making some business contacts for our businesses, and that we hope to to create that pipeline to make it easier for businesses here to create that market in China and vice versa. Other than that, Mr. Mayor, I'll let everybody else give their comments. Thanks.
Thank you, Councilman Lee. Councilwoman Aliva?
Okay, I'm just going to mention what a great time I had last Tuesday night at election night. Hit a lot of the cities, met a lot of the new elected officials that we'll be able to look forward to working with in the future as Millbury elected as well. And I was in Pacifica. No rent control passed, and we had a great time. I had a really, I thought it was actually a really good turnout for an off-election. Go ahead. It's your turn.
There you go. All right, Vice Mayor Pappen?
Rent control died in Pacifica, but warning, they passed cannabis with a huge... A tax on it, yes. So, our neighbors are getting there. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you to San Francisco State today for sharing all their exciting news and the 106 students in Millbury that are there. Wish them great success. The tree lighting in Millbury, December 2nd, which is always a huge event. And at the final meeting in November here on the 28th, we will be talking about the costs of the recreation center, and we've also will be dealing with the council rotation at that time. I just want to add on the community center, you'll also be hearing the recommendation on what should be included and what the facility should look like, not just the costs of the whole package. My compliments to Living Spaces. I'm sure many of you have seen the commercials, but anybody who's been a victim of the fires recently, they are stepping up and giving away free mattresses to families who have been impacted in such a tragic way. So, being a good community advocate here, we greatly appreciate all of their efforts and stepping up in that realm. Also, Councilmember Schneider and I were at an event today at Gilead that put on by the Board of Supervisors and our Assemblyman Mullen. A lot of talk about... A lot of talk about autonomous vehicles and all kinds of developments that are happening, happening here. So I hope the city of Millbrae will be looking towards turning our efforts, if we have to get any future vehicles, to electric, because we, they said the biggest impact on our environment are auto emissions. So our neighbors Burlingame have an absolutely wonderful bus company there that's doing all-electric buses. So exciting things are happening in our region, so I hope we join that effort. And also you saw from the CERT team here too, we do want to encourage everyone in Millbrae, if you haven't signed up yet, to get the San Mateo County alerts on your phones. It's free, you can sign up, and if anything happens in Millbrae or San Mateo County, you will get an alert on your phone. Mountain Lions have been the recent showing up here, but it is important to keeping everyone informed. Thank you very much.
Okay, Councilwoman Schneider?
Well, first I want to give a, a big congratulations to Millbrae staff, specifically Mackenzie Brady and Key Lim who worked on the bicycle grant. I serve on the county bike pedestrian, I can tell you that there were 29 grant, grant applications and we could only fund nine of the 27. We came in at the third highest score. We are receiving a grant for $370,100 and, where's my number? $183. And this is going to work to help make people be able to go from the train station up Murchison, connecting to our spur trail and then up through the spur trail over our very busy street. So there'll be new, safer ways to cross the street at Ashton, to cross the street at Millbrae Avenue, at Hillcrest. This will continue down to Taylor and then up Richmond to Lion Park. And it's the first part of being able to connect our east side with our west side on there. So congratulations to staff. This was the most competitive grant cycle the Bike Pedestrian Committee has ever had. So we did really well and they need all the credit they can get.
Thank you, and thank you for your work with that. But I have a question or actually a request, and that is if you go to, went to China, they have dedicated lanes for bicyclists so they can get to work. And they also have a robust sharing bike program. Is there any discussion on making bicycle commute a priority?
The, I think the new word that's coming through on bike pedestrian issues is connectivity. So San Francisco, South San Francisco, San Bruno are working on their connectivity. Some of it is, is completely separated bike paths and some of it isn't. But I think we're going to, I'm hoping at our January bicycle pedestrian meeting, we're going to talk about how is the county doing in terms of connectivity? So how we can make those, those routes? The big concept was make El Camino Real the bike commute lane. But for any of us who ride on El Camino, it's really scary. So for us, Millbrae applied for a second grant, we didn't get it. No city was going to get two grants out of this. And it's to run down San and Selmo, bringing part of the safe routes to school to Lamita Park, and then eventually connecting into some of the separated bike lanes we have in Millbrae. And eventually, I hope, past California into Burlingame, where Burlingame is working on California into San Mateo Avenue in San Mateo as another significant bike route. Separated or not, hard to say. I can tell you that these things are all incredibly expensive. It takes so much money. So I think there's a work on that and I think right now we're trying to fill in the gaps. That'll be the next future goals is what areas are we kind of missing and how can we connect them? On the bike sharing program, we've had a number of presenters on that. The concept right now is to make sure that if San Mateo has a great program, but if they take those bicycles to, believe it or not, those San Mateans come up to the Millbrae train station, then they're paying out-of-district bike fees. So there has to be more discussion on a bike sharing program that can cross municipal lines. But that's coming. So I have a few more things. Okay, so again, this is great news. I imagine that we're going to see a memo coming back where we approve acceptance and the city match. Is that the case that happens next? Because people are asking me what is going to happen next. Various committees have just asked me what the next step is to make sure that we accept the money and we move forward on the project. For the, for the grant from CKAG, yes?
I don't know if there's any approval acceptance.
I think what we need to do, if we have a project, is to build it into our budget. Usually like a budget amendment and bring it forward. Would there, there would need to be a contract. We would need to, do we have?
Yes.
We need to have a project, spec it, bid it, bring it to you. We've got, we'll have the grant money and we'll build it into the budget.
Great. So hopefully as soon as we can, we can, with everything else on the plate, bring that forward. Cultural Arts Met, we have a new cultural arts member, so welcome Barbara Whitley to the committee. She attended her first meeting on Monday. And they are going forward now with working with, bringing back an event that Millbrae used to have, which was a community cultural arts event. So paintings, photographs, ceramics, other wood carving, I would imagine, things like that. Trying to see, they were trying to sequence it with the opening of the new temporary rec center, but I don't think that's going to work out. So it'll probably be in the springtime. But trying to coordinate with the Park and Rec Commission, or Committee and staff to make that an event that could be both in the Chet Cootie Room and in the new center. The Community Enhancement has done their research on creating an urban, or researching urban forestry management plans. They prepared a presentation, they'd like to bring it to Park and Rec Commission, staff has been helping them with that. And at that point, once it's gone to the two commissions, it'll come back to council to talk about just what's involved in a urban forestry management plan. A few weeks ago, we talked about housing at Mills High School and whether or not that housing, given that it's on school land, would be subject to any city developer fees or property tax. I've gotten clarification on that from both our Assembly Member, the Housing Advocates, and the Senator's Office. No, we will never receive property tax from housing built on that school land. However, we can negotiate and we might have to heavily negotiate to get developer fees. So there is an opportunity to at least get park and rec fees from that development, even though they've sort of, the school district has put that somewhat on hold. And I attend, the other thing that I'd add to what Vice Mayor Pappan said today, the electronic bus company in Burlingame talked about the buses that are currently coming into Millbrae, these are corporate buses. And it turns out the corporate buses that Genentech and Gilead bought are heavily polluting diesel buses. So one thing that we could look at when the Climate Action Plan comes as an element of the general plan is requiring, we as a city can require buses coming into the BART station to be clean fuel. And that could help stimulate moving towards electric buses. And then eventually, they, they had a long description today, it was a great event, fantastic event today about technology. But we have the dirty buses. They don't sit, I don't know, but they talked about what they do at Gilead. They run the dirty buses in the neighborhoods to keep the engines up. So that's putting all that diesel particulate matter into the neighborhoods, into residential neighborhoods. I don't know if they run the bus engines when they come to Millbrae, it's something to look into. And finally, I attended an event for women electeds down in Mountain View at an incubator that was funded by a consortium of Chinese businesses. But it's a kind of business that I think will have the scale to attract into Millbrae and they're very interested in coming to talk to us.
I'm not sure that the city can regulate Samtrans, which is a regional agency.
No, 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 these are the corporate buses.
Private buses, okay.
These are the, the Genentechs, the, and I talked to the presenter afterwards and he said that generally within these companies, the transportation people are older and less inclined to be early adopters of new technology. So we kind of have a generational thing going on here, but our Climate Action Plan, or before the Climate Action Plan, could give us the teeth to do that.
All right. I don't think I have much to add to council comments, but I would like to close this meeting in honor of Mary Ellen Riley, the sister of Bill Riley with the, who's our Emergency Operations Coordinator with the Sheriff's Department. So with that said, we will close and adjourn to our closed session this evening. Thanks very much, have a good night, everyone.